Let me start it. Okay, hi, everybody. Welcome to this Gen Chem session. Thank you for your patience. Um, we are recording this session and then we will have a link on it on the Living Learning Community YouTube page. So we should have that out either today or early tomorrow morning. Um, and if there's no questions, I will pass it over to Dr. Taylor.
Fabulous. Fabulous. Thank you so much. All right. So we're talking about exam two stuff in general. Um, so first of all, what I have up on the screen right now are actually two different announcements combined. So these actually came from the 701 section. Um, so a lot of times we will send out announcements through, um, it shows up in e-learning, it's still 1311, but then it's 701. And so this is another set of announcements from there. So I haven't, this is actually copied and paste from what Dr. Dieckman sent out, I think yesterday. Um, so this is what exam two covers. Um, so exam two coverage. Um, so this is chapter four, sections 4.6 and 4.7. But what I'm going to make the note about this is that this both has size. Now it's of ions, but that does mean that atomic radius is going to be really useful for this. Um, and it's also has electron configuration of ions, which also means electron configuration is going to be really useful. Um, the other thing to mention is that there are a couple of things that are still useful. So for example, talking about on a periodic table, certain terms like we had things like, um, group 7A are also known as the halogens. And there were a variety of different terms for different, um, columns, different groups on the periodic table. So there was a whole set, all of that language to talk about group 1A being the alkali metals, group 2A being the group alkali earth metals, the chalcogens, the halogens, the noble gases, all, all of those things, still fair game. Um, chapter five is all the sections. The two things we're going to not include are lattice energy and organic compounds and functional groups. Um, so lattice energy you likely have not heard about in class at all. And that's because we don't test on it. We don't cover it. As well as organic compounds and functional groups, I know in my notes, uh, basically just says, don't worry about them. But there, it's still in my notes, just in case people are curious. Um, chapter six, all the sections. We are not going to calculate a dipole moment that has to do with polarity, but we do test on polarity. Uh, we also don't ask you guys to calculate things like percent ionic character. Uh, and we usually avoid, um, that notion of a percentage in there. Uh, when drawing Lewis structures, always expand octet to optimize formal charges. I'm going to underline that optimize formal charges, um, unless it violates the octet rule for period two. Um, so this is all, this is all good. Um, so that, so in general, when we talk about drawing Lewis structures, um, this is going to be part of the definition of the best Lewis structure, uh, is to optimize formal charges, but pay attention, um, to the fact that things that are in period two can't have an expanded octet. Um, exam two reviews, uh, there's two of them. One is right now, the other one, Dr. Dieckman's got one, um, later, I think, yes, Thursday. Uh, there's also a last minute Q and A session, uh, in a chemistry clinic. So there's a couple of different things going on. So all that stuff just, but mostly want to chat about what is on this exam. So one of the other things I did want to mention, um, is in chapter five, um, chapter five is where we still have things like molar mass now. Um, so all of your information about going from grams to moles to atoms, we can still use that, except now we can go from grams to moles. In exam two, we don't go to atoms, we usually go to ions. Um, or we can go to molecules. So there's different things that we can go to. Um, but grams to moles conversions are definitely something that will still ask you to do. We can still, we still hold you accountable for. So I think that's all I had prepped to say about that. Um, is mostly, there's a lot of things from chapter four that you still need to move forward. Your stuff from chapter five that you'll still need to move forward. Um, so I asked my class for some questions. I got a variety of different things. Um, one, so one is I actually didn't want to mention, uh, will the final exam grade replace the lowest exam grade and other drops? Um, so this is just a thing to be aware of the way that class works. Um, so we have four exams uh, and a final. And every exam is worth, that's supposed to be the number 15, EU 15%, there we go. Each one of these is worth 15%. The final though, will replace your lowest exam as long as it's higher. Um, final will replace lowest exam if the final is higher. Um, so for some people, that means that the final exam will actually be worth 30%. And let's say, for example, exam one then would not count towards their grade at all. Um, so it depends on the person. Um, and again, the final has to be higher in order for that to be a thing. So we only do this if it's in your favor, um, but that is set up in the, um, in the syllabus as far as how does that work? How do we use it? Um, is in there. Um, the other thing that I will go ahead and mention is we drop the lowest Alex module, which are the Monday assignments, and we also drop the lowest Alex homework assignment, which are the Thursday assignments. So we actually drop one each of the, we drop one Monday assignment and we drop one Thursday assignment. So hopefully that helps with how the class works a little bit more. Okay, um, I also got this question, why is chemistry seem to be so difficult? Um, I always, there's different reasons why chemistry can be challenging. I usually blame it on the notion of math plus concepts. Um, so you have to be able to, you have to work with both, and we have memorization math and concepts, uh, in memorizing. Uh, and so basically in biology, there's a lot of memorizing and concepts, but not a lot of math. In physics, there's a lot of math and concepts, but not a lot of memorizing. And in chemistry, we ask you to do all of it. Um, so we are kind of the science where it's very difficult to hide the thing you dislike. Um, which we, we do a little bit of all of it. Um, it's, it's also, um, challenging to picture. Um, challenging to picture because everything is so small. Um, so that's the other tricky part with chemistry is everything is so tiny that really thinking about it is, is a challenge in and of itself. Uh, but that's, so chemistry's got difficulties for a variety of different reasons. Uh, what will the free response questions off exam to be covering? Um, so this is really the reason why I started off with this stuff. Um, but I, I will mention as far as a free response for exam two, because today is Monday. Um, we don't choose the, the, we haven't actually chosen the free response questions, so I can guess. Um, because I do not know. Um, but in general, we try to aim for, um, a math and a not math, um, which I know seems a little bit silly when I say it like that. Um, but in, in general, if you look at previous exams, um, if you even think about the exam that y'all already did, that's often what we're aiming for is one question that asks you to do a calculation and one question that's not a calculation. For this stuff coming up, um, there's about three or four different math types that we could ask. Um, but there's not that many options in general. Likely something with molar masses, but perhaps something with percent composition. But there's only really like four-ish math questions possible. Um, and there's just not that, that much math on this exam. And for not math, um, we really like drawing Lewis structures, y'all. Not that that has to be what it is. Um, but drawing Lewis structures is really important in this unit. Drawing Lewis structures also what you're going to need moving forward because we are going to roll drawing Lewis structures. And we're going to need to do that again in chapter seven, which is after this exam. Um, so we, we like those a lot. Um, so it could be something different, but drawing Lewis structures is, is oftentimes what we ask you to do because it's one of the most important things out of this unit. Um, is the upcoming exam going to include chapters one through four on top of what we're currently learning? So that's where we talked about, you still need grams to moles conversions, and you still need halogens and chalcogens. And you still need atomic radius and you still need electron configuration. Um, but I will say things like, you know, not, um, wavelength and frequency. So we're, we're not going to just pull a random question that we haven't used at all. Um, so it's going to be stuff that we've used um, since, since exam two. So it's definitely going to be stuff that we'd have actually utilized in one way, shape, form or another. Um, can any class attend any SI session? Um, yes, I put this in here because Dr. Dieckman had information like the chemistry clinic. Um, but yeah, if y'all have not, did not know, um, when you're actually looking at the 701 section, um, hanging out in here, there is actually just a big thing that says the SI schedule and these, these are the room numbers. So like Monday, when Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 10 o'clock to 11:15, there's an S, there's an SI session on all those days. Um, Thursday, Friday from 11:30 to 12:45, there are SI sessions. Um, and this particular, um, schedule doesn't have the names of anybody because you can just go to whatever fits your schedule. Um, so that you don't have to go to the ones that are sitting in your section. You can just go to whomever's fit your schedule. And that's chemistry clinic. Um, so also available. Um, is there any pasty that tells us which exams the semester students have the most trouble on? Um, that, no, uh, there's not really. Um, and here's, here's the thing, um, really. Um, and here's, here's the thing, um, in general, different people will struggle with different exams for different reasons. So for example, exam one is the very first exam of this course. For some of y'all, that was your very first exam in college. Um, so for a variety of different reasons, exam one will be the most challenging exam. Um, exam two, on the other hand, u-usually, um, people have been kind of like startled by exam one. And so usually exam two, people are trying to put the pieces together. Um, that being said, since they're trying to put the pieces together, sometimes they've done better new study habits for exam two. Sometimes they're still figuring things out. Um, also the folks who really adore math, there's not as much math on exam two. Um, so it can be more challenging. It can be more simple. It kind of depends on the person. Um, exam three, I have to think about what is actually on that exam. Um, because basically exam three and exam four usually are timing issues. And what I mean by timing is exam three or exam four usually hits other courses also having exams. Um, and so I will hear from some students that one, either exam three or exam four is better or worse. But it's almost always because they'll tell me, yeah, I had exams in like most of my classes and I've had like three or four exams this week. Um, so that, that oftentimes is schedule related. So different, different things. Is there anywhere that tells us which recommended end of chapter problems correlate with each chapter? For example, what problems do we do for 4.6, 4.7, especially I don't remember if I was already done? Um, okay, so first of all, in the chapter questions, um, I'm in the 701 section. And so there's this thing that says end of chapter questions and keys. And in here, this top thing is actually a list of end of chapter questions. So for example, for chapter five, um, there are all of these lovely things. Did it sign me out of Alex? No, it did not sign me out of Alex. Great. Um, so when I'm looking at chapter five and I see six, eight, nine, when I then go to the ebook and I want chapter five, it looks like this, but this doesn't usually get me to those end of chapter things. So I usually have to go back to this menu, make the menu larger, scroll down and select questions and problems. So you're usually looking to expand the menu of the individual chapters and then select questions and problems. And then there you'll have your list. Um, so now it says 5.6 instead of just number six, 5.8 instead of just number eight. But they are all here available for you. So I think part of this question was really trying to get at like, where is the breakdown? So some of the, they're labeled. So for example, in chapter four, um, you can actually see this section is electron configuration in the modern periodic table. So all of these are section 4.3. And as we go forward, we'll hit electron configuration of ions. So every, so the questions that match the 4.6 will be your electron configuration of ions. That being said, some folks haven't done electron configuration in about two weeks. Um, so even though we're only going to hold you responsible for electron configuration of ions, some folks might do well to go back and do like one or two questions on just electron configuration to kind of remember what that was before going, uh, before looking at electron configuration of ions, which this is then what is actually on the exam on Saturday. So I understand the question also. Different things are helpful for different people. Um, but you can definitely take a look, especially the section headings, um, to help you out with which, which ones are useful. Okay. To that, uh, then I've got some questions about naming. Um, also as we go along, do go ahead and put questions in the chat. Um, I'm going to answer one of these questions about naming acids. Is I think what these are about. Um, and then I'll ask for questions out of the chat and see where, where we're doing. Um, is a compound only an acid or base if it has an aqueous subscript? But what's a gas, liquid or solid? Then it's not. So in general, in a perfect world, we would ask you for hydrochloric acid like this. And actually I'm going to come, what am I doing? I'm going to come down and give myself a little bit more space. Um, so in a perfect world, we would ask you for a hydrochloric acid. So this is hydrochloric acid. And it would have the little AQ symbol. And then HCl as a gas would be hydrogen chloride. You actually name this one like it's ionic. I know, weird. Um, but, but sometimes we're lazy. And it just says this. And sometimes there's no state symbol. Uh, if there's no state symbol, if there's no little AQ or no little G, um, then you assume that it's an acid. You assume we were being lazy. Uh, and if there's no state symbol, then you do assume that it's AQ. Um, and assume that it's an acid. And honestly, this is in part because the aqueous form in real life is more common. So when people talk about HCl, usually they'll like, even though it's hydrochloric acid, HCl is faster to say, it's fewer syllables. And so oftentimes we'll just call it HCl and HCl is the acid. Um, so even in when we talk, um, you'll be like, hey, where is the HCl? We mean, hey, where's the hydrochloric acid? Um, if, if you're talking about the gas, that is rarer, um, in part because that is, that is a nasty gas. Um, that is, that is no bueno. Um, many health hazards, uh, involved. That's supposed to be the letter H. That's better. Um, so in general, assume that's an acid. Hopefully we remember to put the AQ symbol by it. Um, but if we're trying to talk about these, we're trying to talk about acids. Um, I think I had a couple of things, uh, so is naming different when the compound's an aqueous state, it kind of already covered that, uh, really just for acids. Acids are the only thing in there. Um, okay, so it's about 5:20. Um, any questions out of the chat so far?
Uh, yes, we have a couple.
Great.
Um, one of them is, could you go over the electron configuration of ions? The number of atoms in a certain mass of a compound and percent composition of compounds? Um, the next one is, do we need to know bond shapes and angles such as trigonal pyramid? Pyramidal and linear? Yeah. Uh, the next one is, could you go over how to calculate the bond order from the Lewis structure of a molecule, molecule? And the next one is, could we go over the things we need to memorize from the chart that was given to us? And the final one is for which type of compounds do we add the Roman numerals in the brackets?
I think I know what that one is. Okay, no problem. Um, all right, so in semian order, um, bond shapes, angles, no. Um, that, that's chapter seven. Um, so that, that's later. Uh, so good job. You have likely found, um, old exams from like 20 before 2019, uh, or 2019 and prior. Um, good job. Good job being resourceful. Um, because there used to be a time where there were four weeks in between exam one and exam two instead of three weeks. Um, and the week after this exam, we will start with chapter seven, which means we used to put, um, bond angles and shapes on exam two. But those are now on exam three because of the schedule. Um, so nope, no, no bonds, no bond shapes and angles. Some people will X on that one. Um, so that way, that way I answered that one before people can get worried. Um, I'm also going to address this, this memorizing. Um, so I, I don't know what to tell you. Um, so I'll, I'll go ahead and demonstrate what I mean. Um, so for my classes, and this is not, these are just different things out of the textbook. Um, so I gave a handout that looks like this. Um, it's got the flowchart out of your textbook for naming molecular compounds, so there's covalent compounds and naming ionic compounds. Um, and it's got information on when they only have one charge and which ones you have to know. Uh, when they don't, it's got Greek prefixes. I know that it's all slanted. Um, but that one is in there as well. Um, mono, di, tri, tetra, pentah, hexah, heptah, octah, nona, daca, for one through 10 for the Greek prefixes. Um, it also has, um, your information on Lewis structures and it has your polyatomic ions. So this is the part where everybody has different preferred ways of memorizing. If you don't have a preferred way of memorizing, there are so many options that I don't actually know where to start. Um, so there are quizlets, there are physical flashcards. There are putting these in an order that makes more sense to you. Um, but you do in fact need a way to memorize all of the polyatomic ions. Um, I, I don't know what else to, so the, so the one thing I will say, um, so if I were you, I would reorganize these. So, because this list from your period, from the textbook is in, um, alphabetical order, which I frankly think is silly. Um, I keep using it though, because I'm more concerned that someone's going to tell me that I have a different list than the textbook when I don't. Um, so I find it easier to just use an order that I think is silly. Um, but that way we can all talk about the same list together. Okay, so this has ClO minus, ClO2, ClO3, ClO4. This is hypo chlorate. This is fluorite. This is chlorate. This is per chlorate. So as we look at all of these, um, some things to notice, some things to notice. So the ITE endings are for fewer oxygens. The ATE endings are for more oxygens. And then you do have other things like hypo, which is basically like saying even fewer. That is, that's not, I don't know what happened to my handwriting. Sorry about that. Even fewer per is like saying even more. So when you look at this list, you have hypochlorite, chlorite, chlorate, perchlorate. And the oxygens go from one to four. So putting these in order can be very helpful. The fact that you start with one, I think, might also be very helpful. Um, the other thing you might notice is these all actually have the exact same charge. So, oh, so oftentimes your polyatomic ions do go in groups of similar elements. Um, and when they have similar elements, that charge is oftentimes similar. I'll show you some examples when I, why I keep saying often. The other thing though, with this is if you go to a periodic table, which I absolutely will. So this is a reasonable size today, reasonable size. I don't know. Oh, I was scribbling on a different page. Uh, I was scribbling on, uh, oh, too many things, this thing. Um, so if we do go to a periodic table and we take a look, um, here is chlorine. It's in group 7A. This has a negative one charge. So even the charge on all the things that have to do with chlorine are also the same charge that the chloride ion has done here. This is just fluorites, no oxygens. Um, so things like that can certainly be helpful to kind of look at patterns and see what you can notice. Now, part of the reason why I was saying like, oh, sometimes maybe, um, is let's actually look at the ones that have to do with phosphorus. Um, so we have phosphates and we have phosphates. Um, and then we have this guy, and then we have this guy. And this should be nitrogen phosphate. And this is dihydrogen phosphate. Yep. Okay, good. Just checking. Okay, so there's the ITE for fewer. And there's three oxygens. Here's the ATE and there's four. Um, so this part kind of fits what we were looking at, keeping in mind the fact that, um, I start with three and I go to four, and those are the only two options. So then the next ones, if you'll notice, the next two down, both have this ATE. So even though dif- it looks like things are different, this is still predominantly phosphate. It's just, and then things are changing with it. So now what's happening, so I had phosphate and phosphate where I was changing oxygens, but the charge was the same. Now suddenly I have a hydrogen and I have added a hydrogen. And typically when we add hydrogens, we're basically pretending that we've added H plus. So that then, so we basically took this CO4 with a three minus charge and we added H plus to it. And that's why this charge has changed. Because we are basically saying we added a hydrogen ion to it. And so now my charge is actually different. Uh, and then when we go and we make a second change, we are basically adding hydrogen again. And now my charge is different again, because now I have two hydrogens or I only had one before. So my charge is changing yet again. So there are, so it's basically, some of these have rationales. Um, I am being mindful of what I'm choosing when I point out to you things that go together. So so some of these make sense, or at least when you look at them, you're like, ah, at least I can kind of see that there's a pattern in here. We also have things that don't have patterns. Um, so we also have things like this one down here, which is SCN. It's thiocyanate. Um, and it's kind of related to cyanide, sort of. Spell cyanide correctly. That's what I thought. Spell cyanide correctly. That's what I thought. So it is kind of related to cyanide, but like cyanide ends in IDE, cyanate ends in AT. But all the difference is between them is really just the sulfur addition. The charge is even the same. I can't explain that, because they're common names. So these two should go together and they kind of do, but ah, but ah. They don't go together well. We've got peroxide on here. Peroxide is is this guy. It just is. This guy is on the list. This is oxalate. Carbons and oxygens, and we call it oxalate. So this is the part, so some of these are the reasons why, when I first got asked about how do we memorize thing, I kind of stuttered over myself a little bit. Because parts of the list make sense. Parts of the list have logic. Parts of the list don't, because we use them in such a way that the common name is sufficient, and the common name is just what we use. So some of these have logics to them, but not all of them. So that's why also part of this is working with how you memorize things best. This will, if this is the first time you've ever had to memorize such a long list, this will not be the last time. So there's a variety of different courses in college where you have to memorize a long list. Also for anybody headed to the health fields. You at one point will have to memorize not just things like bones in the body or muscles. You'll also have to memorize lists of medications and their side effects. Even my friend had to do it for optometry school. Still had to do that. So so memorizing things is is a skill. I should actually say that, too. So this this is a skill, which does mean you get better with practice. And different techniques work for different people. So do do work on it, but yeah, it it'll get better with practice. Roman numerals. Someone asked about Roman numerals versus brackets. So Roman numerals, we use Roman numerals to name things like this. So we talked, I know it was a little while ago, but on the periodic table, chlorine is one of, is in group seven A and would have a negative one charge. Sorry, I flipped. So this is chlorine with a negative one charge. That means this iron should be iron two plus, because I can see that I have two chlorines. They both have a negative one charge. So I'm essentially bringing two times negative one to the party. So my iron has to balance this negative two. But it only has one atom to do that with. So my charge on my iron has to be positive two. So that means when I go to name this, though, iron is not going back to my periodic table. When I take a look at the periodic table and I look at where iron is. Iron is right here. So group one A is always positive one and group two A is always positive two. And silver, but just silver is always positive one. And zinc and cadmium are always positive two, and aluminum is always positive three. And all the other metals, all the other metals. I'm not even sure if I can highlight them all. Well, I'll see. And iron. And copper, these guys, those guys, and these guys, those guys. And don't forget mithniium. Don't forget actinium. Did I touch them all? There you are. All the rest of them. You're going to just assume the rest of these have multiple charges. Multiple charges. So includes iron. So that means that I have to say what the charge is on iron. So iron is plus two. And so this is iron two chloride. Just iron two chloride. So that's where we use that. The person said brackets. I'm curious. I bet if I had done, we'll stick with iron two. But I bet this would have helped for brackets. I think maybe you meant parentheses. I think if you did not mean parentheses, please ask a question again. So this is iron two nitrates. Basically to show off the fact that there should be two nitrates, because each nitrate has a negative one charge to show off the fact that you need two of them. You put the whole thing in parentheses with a two on the outside, because you're basically demonstrating that you need two of that whole thing to counterbalance the one iron two. The one atom of iron two. Hopefully that helps. If that if that was not it, please ask the question again. So I think that's what we meant by brackets. So we're going to go ahead and knock out electron configuration of ions. I do have to quit one note and come back, though. This happens to me sometimes. I even shut my computer down and brought it back. So electron configuration of ions. So this can look like a couple of different things. So let's do two examples. We're talking about iron two. So we can do iron two plus, and then let's also go ahead and do the chloride ion. Why not? There's something small. No, we're just, we're sorry, we're sorry. So we're going to do electron configuration of these two ions. So I already scribbled so much on this periodic table. Regardless of my scribbles, there's iron, here's chlorine. So what I'm going to do first is the goal is chloride, but I'm going to go ahead and do chlorine first. So we back up to the most recent noble gas, which is neon. And then we go forward. So three S two. So I started at neon. And then I start here at three S one, two, and then I go one, two, three, four, five. So this is three P five. So that's for the neutral. Right? So that was neutral. Then because I want to talk about adding one electron, and that's what this is. We added one electron. This, we could either think of this as being neon, three S two, three P six. This, though, now is also what we refer to as being iso-electronic or having the same number of electrons as argon. So it's possible that you'd go ahead and write out the electron configuration, potentially also the entire thing. There was a time where we would do the whole electron configuration of the chloride ion, one S two, two S two, two P six, three S two, three P six, also an option. So hopefully that helps chloride. We're also going to do iron. Iron, I would start with argon. So iron neutral, I start with argon. And then on the next row, I'm in the four S or S two, and then one, two, one, two, three, four, five, six. And if you guys can actually see me count those, but you can hear me counted at least three D six, and then I asked for iron two plus. So then I must remove from the highest value of N. I remove electrons from the highest value of N. I remove electrons from the highest value of N. So the iron two plus does get rid of the four S two, because I needed to remove two electrons. So I wind up with argon and then three D six. So yes, if I had to remove another one, so if I wanted iron three plus, then I would go ahead and hit up the D electrons. Their next. But notice that I'm still have already removed the four S electrons. So even though, yes, I can hit up those D electrons after I've already gotten rid of my four S electrons, I still get rid of the highest value of N first. And what we're going to do is we're going to do a percent composition question. And then we're going to take some more questions, mostly so that I can do a brief pause in between the two math questions that have been called for. But I have not forgotten that we're going to do bond order. Well, let's go and do a percent composition question. I feel like we've already done iron two chloride enough. Let's do aluminum, something. Let's do aluminum iodide. This is aluminum iodide. And we're going to ask for the percent composition, which can also be referred to as the percent by mass of aluminum and aluminum iodide. So the first thing I need to do is I actually need the molar mass. Molar mass is also known as formula mass, and in this case should not be molecular mass. But what we need to do is need to add the fact that I have one aluminum at twenty six point nine eight. AMUs, four grams per mole. No, they're not the same, but I have three iodines at one hundred and twenty six point nine. Hundred and twenty six point nine to do that right? Yeah. And we're going to add them together. So three times one hundred and twenty six point nine is three eighty point seven plus twenty six point nine eight. So I get a grand total of four oh seven point six eight. So if I want the amount of aluminum, then I'm going to use this entire line, essentially. So I want to know how much alum, what's the percent by mass of aluminum in the whole? So then I'm going to use that twenty six point nine eight divided by four oh seven point six eight times one hundred percent. So then I'm looking at six point six percent aluminum. Just so you know, to deal with the formula, if I had been doing the iodine, I would still want the whole thing. So what I mean by that, if I was looking at iodine, I would have done the three times one hundred and twenty six point nine divided by four oh seven point six eight times a hundred percent. So I'm always looking for the total contribution of the thing. Three point four percent. So I'm always looking for the total contribution of whatever we're dealing with. So not just a single iodine. In this case, because there were three iodines in total, I did get to use just a single aluminum, because there's only one aluminum in this particular formula. So in general, that's the way that this one goes. Okay. So before I do a second math problem, are there any questions in the chat so far?
Yes, there are a couple. The first one says, what acids do we need to know? The second one is, are there any polyatomic ions that have only one variation? And if there are, do they end in it or eight? The next one is for the ones where hydrogen is added, would it be considered an acid? The next one is, should we know dimensional analysis for molar mass? And the last one is, how do you know which polyatomic ion to put parentheses over?
So this question that asks which polyatomic ions only have one variation. I'm going to let you do that. So and and here, and here's the thing. Listening to me analyze a list is not as valuable as you analyzing a list. So I know it sounds like I'm just trying to get out of doing the work, but honestly, this is a time where you need to do that work. Because that will actually help you study. So you going down the list of the polyatomic ions that are in the textbook that are in your notes. But it's widely available. It's in Alex. It's in the ebook in Alex. It's in the textbook. That is basically looking at that list and reorganizing them and figuring out which one only has one variation. That's studying. That is studying. So you need to do that on your own. I will not deprive you of that. So someone's asking if an H is added, does that mean that it's an acid? Sorry. So I'm going to, I'm going to be a little, I'm, I'm, ah, blah. Here's the deal. In chapter nine, yes. We would actually consider HPO four negative two to be an acid, because it is. That, however, is also a base. And that is in chapter nine, which we are going to get to in November. So don't, don't you worry, we are going to get there, but very good. That actually does mean that it's an acid. But not for naming. Not not for naming purposes. So we don't actually name hydrogen phosphate as an acid. But it acts like an acid, but we don't name it like an acid. That is a chapter nine thing. So I'm not actually going to say more about that. But there is a definition of acids. Right now, all we're actually doing is naming acids. By the way, I would absolutely move naming of acids into chapter nine if I could, but we don't. So that's, that's, that. What acids do we need to know? You're not going to like this answer. So and then we're going to do the dimensional analysis. And we're going to deal with polytomics in parentheses. So as far as what acids you need to know. So there are two main kinds of acids. There are acids like we talked about. But there's a lot of ones that look like this. So this top one is hydro or ic acid. This new one that I drew is going to be hydro slen for selenium ic acid. So we can basically do any hydrogens plus one other element. And you can name them. So we have a tendency to do halogens and chalcogens for these. You can name more of them, but we have a tendency to stick with the group six A, which are chalcogens, the group seven A, which are halogens for these in general, tend to be all non-metals. You can name any of those. You can actually also name the things in group five A like this. So a little awkward, because sometimes we, they have different names usually. But especially group six A and group But especially group six A and group seven A work beautifully for hydrogen and one other element. Look like this hydro, something in the middle to be the element I see acid, ick acid. Then basically any polyatomic ion with oxygens also acids. So we already talked about we talked about this one, which I'm gonna give you a couple of ones to show off. Did this one, I was being facetious, but you can actually name that one too. So on the far left, this is hypo chlorite for the acid, it's got a negative one charge, I therefore add one hydrogen to it. We'll go ahead and put the AQ symbol on it. And this is now, all we're gonna do is we're take this ending and change it. We're gonna keep everything else though. But this is now hypochlorous acid. So the only thing we're doing is we're taking the IT ending and we're putting it as OUS. OUS and then acid. This guy is phosphate. I'm gonna add enough hydrogens to neutralize the charge. And this is now phosphoric acid. I take the AT ending and I add ick acid. Notice though, there's no hydro here. So we don't, this is different from, from the ones where it was just the hydrogen and the one other element. But you can actually also name this guy with that same mentality, that's oxalate. I add enough hydrogens to balance out the charge. And this is now this is called, this is pronounced oxalic. I know it goes from oxalate to oxalic acid. But same general idea that AT ending changes to IC and then acid. So you, you, any, any polyatomic ion that ends in IT or AT. We can add enough hydrogens to balance out the charge and you can name it. So I'm not gonna go through all of your polyatomic ions and show you what all of those are as acids. This is a way for you to study. This is a way for you to study. So IT endings get replaced with OUS and the word acid. AT endings get replaced for the most part with IC and the word acid. I know it's not exact. But it's good practice for you to look at your polyatomic ions. So it's another good way for you to study. Look at your polyatomic ions list and figure out which ones can make acids and how many hydrogens you need to add to balance out the charges. And a good way to practice your naming. So no, I cannot go over all of the possible acids. The list is too long. I am not doing that. I'm also not gonna read out every single polyatomic ion on that list. As part of the exam review, y'all can read that on your own. Okay, when do you need parentheses? When there are multiple. Here's what I mean, I'm still using iron two. So nitrate, you need more than one. But sulfate, you don't. Because sulfate has a negative two charge. So if I was gonna use parentheses, but there would be no, but so if I'm gonna use parentheses, I, there has to be a number that goes outside the parentheses. So that's when you use the parentheses is when you need to say, hey, by the way, you got a couple of these for, for every however many. So if I'm doing phosphate, I need this as well. But when it's a one to one ratio, no parentheses. So thank you for asking that question again, by the way. Because I was doing my best, but I was struggling. So yeah, so basically, when, when there are multiple is when you add the parentheses, but when there's only one and there's no, there's no parentheses then. So only when there's multiple, only when there's multiple to worry about. Okay. Dimensional analysis and molar mass, which is the same thing as atoms in a compound. What have we not done yet? So let's do copper. Let's actually do copper one sulfite, just for kicks and giggles. So that is the copper one means that that is copper with a positive one charge sulfate is SO three with a negative two charge. So that should give us some idea of what we're doing. And then from here, so that is copper two, but just one sulfate. So I do need to use, so no parentheses for that example. And the actual question, actual question. We're gonna do all the dimensional analysis, how many? I'm gonna make this bigger in just a minute. How many copper one ions are there in forty five grams of copper one sulfates? That didn't work. The keyboard shortcut for increasing font size does not work in OneNote, sad face. So this is gonna let us practice so many things. So first of all, we are gonna need the molar mass, but we don't have it. So I have two coppers and I only have one sulfur and I need three oxygens. So that is two times, where is that periodic table? Sixty three point five five? Two times sixty three point five five and sulfur is thirty two point oh seven. And oxygen is sixteen. That one I do have memorized. You don't have to memorize them. You will be given a periodic table on every single exam, whether you wanted it or not. So this is one hundred and twenty seven point one, and this is just gonna be thirty two point oh seven. And you would think I would have multiples of sixteen memorized, but I don't. Two oh seven point one seven. And that is in grams per mole, grams per mole. So first thing we're gonna do is I need ions. These are kinda like atoms, similar to atoms. So the first thing I'm actually gonna do though is go grams moles to, this is technically gonna be formula units. And then I'm gonna go to ions. That's gonna be my order. There is another order that also works. But that's gonna be the order I'm gonna go into. The first three steps will be things that are gonna be just like stuff we did on exam one. So that's the reason I like the order that I'm gonna do is because the first three steps are actually repeats from the previous exam. So I have forty five grams that is given. Grams are always the bigger unit between grams and moles. So when it comes to what am I doing, multiplying or dividing? Grams to moles, grams are bigger, moles are smaller, so this number has got to get smaller. So therefore I am in fact dividing. So I always get really spoiled with the stylus in the classroom and then I have my home stylus and it's just not the same. But I'm gonna hang on to some extra decimal places. Just for rounding errors. So there's my number of moles. Once I have my number of moles, going from moles to atoms, things should get really, really big. So in one mole, this is the point where you also look at that potentially useful information page. It's been a while since we did it. These are technically formula units. So these are basically sets of that copper two SO three. So when I say formula unit, technically copper one sulfate, sulfate, copper one sulfate is not a molecule. Cuz copper one has a charge to it. So when we're trying to talk about like, well, what is that thing? That thing is technically sorry, my ear is bugging me. Can you guys still hear me? I messed up my speakers.
We can still hear you.
Yay, thank you, just checking. Don't know where I put it. I was gonna look at the potentially useful information, but I lost my potentially useful information. This number is on there, oh, I can always find it in the seven oh one section. Midterm exams, useful information, potentially useful information. I know it's very small, but Avagadro's number is still hanging out on this piece of paper, well, on this PDF file, still there. So that's where I get that from, formula units. So then I multiply a pen six point oh two two times ten to the twenty third. So again, going to formula units, a whole bunch of them, expecting oh so very many of them. So now I have one point three oh eight oh six times ten to the twenty third. Don't forget that times ten to the twenty third. You need that. So if I stopped here, this would be sets of copper one sulfate. So if I stopped here, this would be in repeating sets of copper one sulfate. How many times does that thing happen? But that's also not what I want. I want my copper ions. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take this number. And what I'm gonna say is, since this is for the whole thing, since this is for all of copper one sulfates. I'm gonna say that in one copper one sulfate, I actually have two copper one ions. And so all I am gonna do is multiply this by two, so this gets me about two point six two times ten to the twenty third. And that's then where I can stop. So the, the things I did is I went from grams as I calculated the molar mass. So to refresh and review, I calculated the molar mass from scratch. That's where I got the two hundred seven point one seven. Then I took my grams and divided by the molar mass. So I had grams, grams need to get smaller if we're gonna go to moles, cuz mole is a smaller number than the gram number. So I start with grams, I divide, cuz if I start with grams, I need to go smaller. Then once I have moles, I multiplied by six point oh two two times ten to the twenty third. But here, that then gives me units. That basically gives me formula units of the whole copper one sulfate. Then because there's two copper ions in one copper one sulfate, you multiply by two to get the final answer. One of the questions people often ask is about this last step. So the analogy I like to ask is if I wanted to know about tires in the parking lot. We could go ahead and assume, like, I, I know many people have spare tires, but we're gonna assume that there's four tires on a car. So if I know that there is, that there are twenty cars in the parking lot, then you could tell me if I take my twenty cars and for every one car, there are four tires, you could then tell me that there's eighty tires in the parking lot. That is how that math is working. So even though the copper is part of the unit, we consider tires to be part of the car. You could still say every time I have a unit of copper one sulfate, every time I have a car, I have for the copper one sulfate, I have two coppers. For the car, I've got four tires. Yeah, so for the, sorry, for the copper, for the copper one sulfate, I have two copper ions. For the copper one sulfate, I have two copper ions. For the car, I have four tires. Pretty sure I said something wrong, but that's okay, worked it out in the end. So yeah, so the tires in the parking lot analogy is one that I like, cuz it typically helps people of how we think about it. Cuz that, it's the same idea as how we think about it. Cuz we don't think about like dismantling all the cars to get the tires. We're just curious how many tires are hanging out in the parking lot. Okay, so I think that that was both atoms in a compound. And I also think that that was dimensional analysis with molar mass. I think I knocked out two questions in the same go. So next up is calculating bond order from a Lewis structure. Deep breath, everybody. Actually, before I do that, cuz that, that will, that will take some serious time. Are there any questions in the chat right now before I leap into bond order? Any questions in the chat right now?
Yes.
What have we got?
The first one is, do we need to know the 3D models from the upcoming lab? The next one is, can we go over ionic bonding with Lewis dot diagrams? The next one is, do we need to memorize the homonuclear diatomics? The next one is, how does the octet rule work when things like hydrogen doesn't care about eight valence electrons? The next one is, can you go over resonance structures and formal charges? The next one is, should we be aware of inorganic compounds and their naming formulas for the exam? The next one is, can we go over Lewis dot structures and their exceptions to the octet rule? And how to memorize the exceptions to the octet, octet rule? And what is the relationship between types of elements in a bond and ionic character within the bond?
Alright. So I am still gonna do bond order very, very soon, but couple things, homonuclear diatomics, yes. Yes, you have to know what those are. So those are, so the way I was told to memorize those is it, you can pronounce this as Brinkelhoff. But homonuclear diatomics are the set of elements, non-metals particularly, that all show up as the same element, but repeated twice. So perhaps the most famous is oxygen. The oxygen that we breathe is O two. And it's the O in Hoff, so there are those. Looking at a periodic table. The other way that I was shown, some people memorize those is if you highlight them, I've heard of things like the magnificent seven or star seven. Because nitrogen, oxygen, fluorine, bromine, iodine, and a hydrogen, you can't forget the hydrogen. These, these are the homonuclear diatomics. And so some people I've heard do star seven, because it's basically like coloring in the periodic table. So I've heard of that too, but yes, you do also have to have those memorized. I'm not sure what inorganic compounds and naming means. So I heard inorganic, when I heard this said, inorganic usually means ionic. And yes, you have to know. And yes, you have to know how to name ionic. So ionic is yes. If it's, if you mean organic, then the answer is no. The other thing I'll refer back to you is is that there is an announcement in the seven oh one section that talks about what you do and don't need to know. So I think that will help out with that. 3D models from lab, I don't know what you did in lab. No idea. Is is that the trigonal planar stuff? Because trigonal, because trigonal planar is exam three. So if this is the one where you guys did all the balloons and you have things like tetrahedral and trigonal planar and trigonal by pyramid and octahedral, that's all exam three. So if if that's what that means, that's all exam three, which is not the one on Saturday. If that's not what we're talking about, I need some help. So I'm not sure. Okay, then. Octet exceptions. Actually, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead, go ahead and do bond order. And then we can come back to ionic bonding and dealing with, actually, we're gonna deal with resonance when we do bond order. And dealing with Lewis and exceptions and memorizing exceptions. And element types in ionic bonds. So we'll circle back to ionic bonding. Okay, but. That wasn't words. Yeah. It's faster to draw. Sorry, there's a couple of different options for drawing resonance structures for practice. But we're gonna start with something that's small to draw. So oxygen is in group six A, it's a chalcogen. It therefore has six valence electrons. Three times six is 18. Put these together. There's only three of them. You, you're not allowed to draw circles, by the way. Four electron, four were used, 14 electrons left. If you are drawing it, if you draw it, no circles. What I mean by that is do not put these like this. Nope. You don't get to draw circles. Don't, don't, don't draw circles. Lines, linear lines or things where there's a central atom and things come off of it like spokes on a wheel. That's fine. No circles. The reason for that, by the way, for those of you that are like, why? There are circular compounds. That's true. But there are also rules that govern what makes stable versions and what makes unstable versions. And so he, but that is an organic thing because basically some of them, the circles are basically too small, they're too tight to be something that's stable. So you're going to assume that they just don't draw circles unless we draw them for you. I know that that kind of seems arbitrary and I'm sorry, but this is the training wheels. Okay, I got 14 electrons. Two, four of my linear molecule, that's six, eight, 10, 12, 14. I used them. And left. I've got a problem because this oxygen is sad. So I need to fix it. That's supposed to be a frowny face. I will not just redraw frowny face. Anyway. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take some electrons from one of the oxygens that is doing okay and share. And now that oxygen is sharing the correct number of electrons. That's got eight. The oxygen on the left that was forced to share still is sharing eight. The oxygen on the right that was forced to share is still sharing eight. We can also go ahead and analyze this for formal charge. And all of these are different from each other. So if I'm gonna analyze, we'll circle this guy again, analyze this guy. This oxygen brought six electrons to the party. It is sharing two electrons as in bonds, that is half of the four electrons that are in the double bond belong to this oxygen that I've circled in blue. And then it's got four non-bonding electrons, non-bonding electrons. Six minus two minus four is zero. So the formal charge for the for the left most oxygen is zero. Middle oxygen. It has valence electrons. Valence electrons go first, that's six. It's got three bonds or six total bonding electrons. So this is bonding electrons. This three is just number of sticks. Two dots, two non-bonding electrons, non-bonding electrons. Six minus three minus two is positive one. Yes, yes. Yes, I am focusing and making sure. This rightmost oxygen. As we look at this one, let's put this over here. Oxygen brought six valence electrons to the party is only sharing one stick that is half of all of the electrons it has in bonds. Anytime I'm doing that one half thing, what I'm really doing is I'm basically saying that this covalent bond has two electrons in it. And I'm giving one electron to the oxygen that's in yellow and I'm giving one electron to the oxygen in pink. When we had the double bond, there's actually four electrons in here. And so I'm giving half of the electrons in a double bond to the left most oxygen and two electrons to the double, two electrons from the double bond to the oxygen in the middle. And then it's got six dots. And that is grand total of negative one. Now. So formal charge wise, I have got a plus one and a minus one. And so this feels like I could do better than that. So when we say, hey, we could do better than that, what we really mean is we could share more electrons. So it's tempting, and we're gonna go ahead and demonstrate is I currently have this molecule. And I could share more electrons. But when I do that, something new is wrong. So I'm gonna go ahead and put a giant X through this right now. Well, I'll put it through it in a minute. This is wrong. But it's wrong because oxygen cannot have expanded octet. So I know sharing more electrons looks really pretty. I know sharing more electrons. It's now so more very symmetrical. But it cannot happen. That structure does not exist. No. So turns out that that previous structure we had drawn is the best we can do. So I now think that we've talked about Lewis dot structures and formal charge. Because we did analyze formal charge on here and we did try to make it better, but we can't make it better. So we are stuck with this guy. But you might have noticed from where we began. We over here, I arbitrarily picked the electrons on the the left most oxygen. I didn't have to. I could have picked the electrons on the right most oxygen. That would have been okay. Can I keep any of my color coding the same? We'll just keep that guy. So the thing is, I could have taken electrons from the other oxygen. And then it would have looked like this. And the reason why I'm trying to make a big deal out of this is because this is always one of those weird times where you're like, but isn't that the same molecule? Technically, we're talking about having a single bond versus a double bond to particular atoms. But here's the other weird thing is is that data data shows two bonds are of equal length. Not 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 one single and one double, not one long and one short, equal length. So the Lewis structures that we drew are what we refer to as resonant structures. So this that these guys are what we refer to as resonant structures. They are where there are multiple correct ways to draw the best Lewis structure. If we are asking you to draw things on an exam, if we are asking you to draw things on an exam, you are first going to draw the best Lewis structure. Which means optimize for formal charge. And then after that part's done, look for resonance. So draw the best little structure optimized for formal charge first, then look for resonance in that order. So but here's the weird thing. So basically, both of these resident structures are wrong as drawn. This is where I actually like Dr. Diekman's analogy. Which is that it seems like it's flipping back and forth between two states, but it's not. So it's not red and blue. It's actually a blend. It's actually a blend of both. So this should be basically not red or blue, but purple. So the truth is the average. Truth is the average. Now, the thing is, is is that drawing this doesn't work very well for Lewis structures. I'm still gonna do it. Because I think sometimes having this idea that we do try to draw things in a way that is a little bit more honest is helpful, but this also makes some people kind of unhappy. So basically, average the bonds, which basically means the double bond, the electrons in the double bond are spread out over the entire molecule. Being spread out over the entire molecule does add extra stability. But because this drawing is weird. We're gonna have a different way to cope with this. So we demonstrate not with Lewis structures. But with bond order. So we're gonna use bond order because this weird dotted diagram is weird. Also, I wanna see real quick if I just type in Lewis structure of ozone. If it'll do the weird dotty thing, or if it won't do the weird dotty thing. Nope. You did not do the weird dots thing. Okay, that's fine. Oh, oh, it's over here. Yes. That's the other way to draw the weird dot thing. Thank you for not making me think I'm crazy. Thank you, Reddit. Anyway, I like this drawing. But it looks weird. So anyway, this is another way to think about the thing that I was trying to draw with the dots, which is that instead of it being in two places or going back and forth, it is averaged out. So the average is what we're looking for. So this makes me happy. But we're gonna deal with bond order. We're gonna deal with bond order. So two things. So one, we're gonna deal with bond order. Two, if this was an exam, if this was an exam, you would be expected to draw all of the resonant structures. So sometimes we ask you to draw them. Sometimes we just ask you, how many are there? So this has two resonant structures. Because again, thinking about the fact that that oxygen on the right is a unique oxygen from the oxygen on the left. There's two different ways for me to draw this molecule. So we don't actually draw the one I like the best because it's complicated. What we do, though, we can also do the bond order. So bond order. If it was a single bond, it would be a bond order of one. If it was a double bond, it would be a bond order of two. If it was a triple bond, it would be a bond order of three. It's, so what we're gonna do is we have two bonds. One bond is a single bond. Single. The other bond is a double bond. And we're gonna average those together. Total number of bonds. That is three over two or one and a half. And that is the bond order for ozone. So when we're talking about bond order, what we're trying to do is we're trying to rationalize that or trying to cope with that notion that it's not a single bond and a double bond. It's actually the average of those two resonant structures. So the truth is an average of the resonant structures. Since the truth is an average of the resonant structures, we therefore essentially average the bond orders together. So if you had a single bond, it would just be a bond order of one. If you had a double bond, it would be a bond order of two. If you had a triple bond, it would be a bond order of three. Because it's really the average of one single bond and one double bond, we therefore note bond order as being one and a half. You can see this in other ways. So I am gonna cheat a little bit in that I'm just gonna draw the correct phosphate. So so I am definitely cheating in the fact that I am not going through all of the Lewis structure as far as like how to draw it, how many valence electrons it has, all of that jazz. I'm I'm just, just drawing it. Has a negative three charge. Phosphate then has one double bond to one of its oxygens, but just one. So kind of pop over here. I was trying to make drawing those lone pairs a little faster. That's kind of faster. Weirder, but that's okay. So and do you notice I've got those lovely little resonance arrows down? I draw it a little bit smaller. I haven't gotten to the bottom yet. I haven't gotten to the bottom yet. So and then I have to go to the subsees. Oh, well, those brackets are huge. Sorry. Resonance arrows, and I've gone to the side yet. To left, to left, to the right, to the right. Why didn't I realize that the cha-cha slide was all about resonant structures? There we go. Oh, no, that's gonna take up space in my brain now. And technically, resonance arrows all the way back around. So this is the best Lewis structure. The best Lewis structure, three single bonds, one double bond. And this then has four resident structures. And for bond order, it says three single bonds. So these are my, move that down actually, so I can just redo this. So for bond order, these are your three single bonds. Plus two. That is your one double bond. And then we divide this all by four because there are four bonds in total when you look at the phosphorus connected to the oxygens. So this then is five divided by four or one and a fourth odd order. So resonance and bond order typically go together. We can ask you guys about the bond order or something that does not have resonance. But this is definitely a I think for every like nineteen times we ask about res, we ask you about bond order like nineteen times, it's got resonance and maybe one time it's doesn't have resonance. Probably even more on the like has resonance. Anyway, if we ask you about bond order, you should definitely think about resonance. It might not be there. But it probably is. So bond order and resonance usually go together. Resonance is usually asking how many resonant structures. So the other thing that I did already say once, but I'll go back to is if you are drawing things for us on an exam, we are going to assume that you are first going to draw the best Lewis structure and optimize for formal charge first. So we do make this assumption that you are going to draw the best Lewis structure, optimizing for formal charge first. And then after you've optimized for formal charge, then look for resonance. There are gonna be examples in the textbook, in the end of chapter questions that basically say, these are resident structures. Ta-da! And you know what? They're right. There are resident structures that include ones that have not optimized for formal charge. But you will not do that when you report them on exams. When you report on exams, you will always optimize for formal charge first and then look for resonance. So resident structures have have a wider definition. But when we are asking you, you are definitely going to first optimize for formal charge. So optimize for formal charge first and then look for resident structures. Hey. Resonance and formal charge. Okay, so one of the questions was about Lewis structures and exceptions. So I actually have a slide that I made that I adore because I made it. And I think it's great. But of course, I think that because I made it. But uh, okay. So here's the deal. So when it comes to the octet rule, when it comes to the octet rule, everything in the third period and below can have an expanded octet. So I think of this, so there's my N equals three. And below, these are basically at least eight or an octet. So where's my third period near, third period and below? These are my at least eight. So third period and below, at least eight. The ones highlighted in yellow, carbon, nitrogen, oxygen, fluorine, neon are only eight. So there are elements on the periodic table that are only eight. Only eight. There's just not that many of them, though. So the only eight ones are just carbon, nitrogen, oxygen, fluorine, neon. So there's only five elements that are eight, eight, and only eight. Then you have the weird ones. You have boron at six. You have beryllium at four. You have hydrogen, which for an octet, it's octet is basically two. It only wants one bond, but doesn't want to share those two electrons. And helium also at two. You might notice I am ignoring lithium. That's because lithium is a metal. Lithium doesn't have, doesn't make bonds. Lithium is a little positive ion that hangs out. So this is the summary. How do I remember that? How do I keep all of that straight? Hydrogen and helium at the very top are because of the fact that poor little hydrogen only has one electron in one S. So hydrogen only brings one valence electron to the table. And if it can just share one more, then it's happy and it's done. So I oftentimes do think about the Lewis dot structure for hydrogen and this idea that it just wants one more. Just just one more, just one more. And then if it had one more, it would look like helium. That's helium. So that's kind of how, so that's, so I do think about hydrogen and helium as being kind of these like bizarre little buddies that hang off the very tippy top of the periodic table. And I actually teach a graduate course with chemistry, but they're typically like high school chemistry teachers. But one of their jobs that we usually have a discussion about is where does hydrogen belong on the periodic table? Because hydrogen's kind of weird and it's got a couple of places where it can belong. Because it's so strange with its poor little one valence electron. Beryllium and boron are both strange. So beryllium is in group two A. So therefore, beryllium only has two valence electrons. And so back to Lewis dot structures, beryllium basically does have those like two gaps or those two holes where it could accept electrons. And I know it's really weird because beryllium technically is classified as a metal. But this is one of those times where we're asking you to learn this exception because beryllium, when you look at its bonds and how the bonds act, beryllium acts more like beryllium's bonds act like covalent bonds. So it's weird. It is weird. But again, this idea that beryllium is gonna form covalent bonds to something like chlorine and be satisfied with an oct, satisfied with only four electrons, the Lewis dot diagram will actually help you with what that might look like. Same game with boron. Boron hasn't, is satisfied with six electrons. It's in group three A. So when you're looking at boron, boron does in fact, again, have three valence electrons, which means it's ready to form three bonds and that's what it does. So boron typically does form a grand total of three bonds. It's what we refer to as being naturally electron deficient. And boron's chemistry is in fact so bizarre. So when I was in high school, my um, my high school chemistry teacher would just say boron misbehaves. And that was, that was all he'd say. And I'd be like, really? What does that mean? And the truth is, this is that boron is satisfied with only six, sharing six electrons, but it can handle eight? And so this notion of boron misbehaves, when we were in college, one of my friends went to UCLA and got a degree in chemistry. And one of the classes she took was supposed to be inorganic chemistry and it was nothing but boron chemistry. A couple of years later, I was reading chemistry magazine and there's a particular honor that professors can get, faculty members can get called the Priestley Medal. And she had basically taken a class from someone whose entire life's research was all about boron. And he actually won an award for that. And I was like, is this, is this your organic professor? You talk about, we talked about nothing but boron? It was. So she took bor, she took a chemistry from an expert on boron. Apparently, it was really weird. But so that's how I remember all of that. So the question was what things follow the octet rule, what things kind of follow the octet rule, what things don't follow the octet rule, and how do you remember? I remember with the periodic table, third period and below, eight for an octet or more can have an expanded octet. Above that line, we're looking at things that typically we're looking at a small subset in the P block that do in fact strictly follow the octet rule. Then boron and beryllium. I would recommend you use the Lewis dot structures, Lewis dot symbols, pardon me, Lewis dot symbols to think about what they're usually satisfied with because their valence electrons will actually help you out. Same thing with hydrogen. So I think we've talked about the octet rule with hydrogen, Lewis structures and exceptions, as well as how to memorize them. So I think we've covered those things. It's six forty-three and I see ionic bonding Lewis dot in types of elements and ionic bonding. So I think we're going forward with ionic bonding, but since it's six forty-three, any other questions from the chat so far?
Yes, there are a couple. So the first one is, why is the formal charge of arsenic on SO2 negative zero instead of negative one? Can you explain how we draw the Lewis structure of SO2 negative? The next one is, can you explain the concept of resonance itself? Aren't molecules 3D, so they shift in space, meaning that the variations only exist because we are drawing them on a 2D surface?
Okay.
Those are the only new ones.
So let me actually talk about this resonance shift in space. So the whole notion of resonance is to describe what we see in nature. So this has more to do with the fact that if I was talking about, so I'm gonna stop. So here. So for the sake of this, we're just gonna draw that's a single bond. That's a double bond. Length. So when we look at length, if if what I had was actually this thing, then I would see this, but I don't see this. So this is not observed. Not observed. What is observed is something that is basically halfway in between. But equal. And yes, it's got a 3D shape to it. So this is actually slightly bent. It's not bent a lot. It's bent a little bit. I can't draw bent a little bit. So what, so yes, there are such things as 3D shapes in space. But what we observe in nature is the fact that you have bond lengths that match averaged bonds together. So this notion of resonance has a lot more to do with matching nature and matching the fact that you don't see uneven bond lengths. You actually see that all the bonds have the same length. So that's hopefully that helps with resonance is the average. Resonance is the average. So you don't expect one shorter than the other. You expect them to be the same. And that is what you see in nature. The the other thing I'll mention. So you guys might have seen carbon to hydrogen, carbon to carbon, carbon to carbon, carbon to carbon, carbon to carbon. So you guys might have seen, so you don't see this in in in, we don't, we don't draw these. So basically, these double bonds, because they can, because for resonance, we would draw them in basically the two places. And all the hydrogens. What we draw instead, so and so instead of drawing these two things out, what we typically draw instead, one, this is where the hexagon shape comes from. And instead of drawing double bonds like this, we just draw with a circle in the middle. So if you've ever seen chemistry memes or organic molecules drawn where it's a hexagon with a circle in the middle, that's actually resonant. So it it's a thing. It is not just from something spinning around in space. It is the average. It is in fact the average. Okay. I went across my fingers that that's the right structure. I know that's off of the last year's exam. We're gonna do it now anyway, because everybody seems to be obsessed with this compound. It's either the same person asking me three different times. I think it's actually multiple people. It's the same person three times. Okay. So ASO2 minus, really hope I've got that correct. Really, really hope so. Actually, what I am gonna do real, real quick is I'm gonna go ahead and grab. So if you guys have not looked at them yet, in the seven oh one section, one of these folders says exam blanks and keys from fall twenty-four. I'm gonna actually look at the blanks. So that way, if you haven't gotten a chance to look at it yet, I'm not giving anything away on the key, but I'm pretty confident that the person asking me this question is asking about something off of this exam. I just want to draw the right thing. Cool, that's right then. Goodie. Because I would feel unhappy if I did the wrong comment. ASO2 minus. So arsenic. I realize it's a metalloid, but it is in group five A. And this question asks, what is the formal charge? What is the formal charge? On arsenic. So since asking me for the formal charge, we are in fact gonna assume that this is a covalent compound. So we're gonna draw a Lewis structure. Arsenic is in group five A, so that's five valence electrons plus oxygen is hanging out in group six A, six valence electrons. So that's two times six. And then it has a negative one charge. So since it has a negative one charge, the negative one charge, I add one more electron. So that's really eighteen electrons. So two times six is twelve plus five is fifteen. Five is seventeen, twelve plus five is seventeen. Plus one is eighteen. By the way, highly recommend y'all use a calculator for counting up your valence electrons because I've been talking now for almost two hours straight. And I I start to get a little tired. Sometimes I mess up my words. So sometimes, same reason why I was double checking to make sure I got this right. Okay. So arsenic in the middle because it's less electronegative than oxygen. Bonding everything together, no atom left behind, that's for, I've got fourteen left. Two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve. Fourteen. So that's all of my electrons, zero left over. Then from here, this looks just like ozone. This looks exactly like ozone so far. Arsenic is not, does not have a. Full octet yet, so we're going to go ahead and move. One set of electrons in. But arsenic is in the third period or below. So while that is an option, I do also want to consider for formal charge reasons. If it's better to go ahead and do it and put in two sets of shared electrons. Ta, 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 so. This oxygen. Brought six electrons to the party for its valence. It has a grand total of. Four electrons in bonding pairs or two sticks minus four dots. That is zero. There is this other oxygen way over here. There's also an oxygen that has six valence electrons. It is sharing two electrons in a bond or has one stick. And it's got six dots around it, so that is negative one. So. And then I have arsenic in the middle. So. Arsenic in the middle brought five valence electrons to the party. It is sharing a grand total of six electrons in bonds. It only gets credit for half of those and it has two valence electrons. So it's five minus three minus two, which is zero. This one over here on the right, what I'm going to point out to save myself a little bit of time. Is both of these oxygens are the same. And they're actually going to match the one that we did here in pink. So because it's got two sets of lone pairs and one double bond, so it's the same as that. That does mean that I do want to do the arsenic on this side because it's probably different. So arsenic. When it has the two double bonds and lone pair. So it still brought five valence electrons to the party. But it now is sharing eight electrons because it's got two double bonds. And it has the lone pair, so that's five minus four minus two, which is negative one. So you basically have a choice. Of where you put the negative one formal charge. And so the question is, do you put the negative one formal charge on the arsenic? Or do you put the negative one in so then it would be the structure on my right with two double bonds? Or do you, or is it better to put the negative one on the oxygen? And the answer is it's more favorable to put the negative one on the oxygen because. The oxygen is more electronegative. So when you're looking at this question, the fact that the oxygen is hanging out right next to fluorine, oxygen is very electronegative. So you're really starting to ask where, which element is more likely to carry a negative one formal charge? And this is the part where the oxygen is much closer to fluorine, the oxygen is going to be more electronegative than the arsenic. So the oxygen is going to carry the negative one formal charge, which means we're going with the structure on the left. And the structure on the left, the arsenic has a formal charge of zero. Zero. So I'm not going back to check the key. So I'm going to cross my fingers that I'm right. Okay, what's next? Where did my questions go? Oh, ionic bonding, oh, there's another set of questions, where did the questions go? Oh, they're in here. Oh, they were just about that and the Lewis structure for it. Lewis structure. Or AS O2 minus. Okay. So in the four minutes left, the things that were asked about were particularly about ionic bonding. And doing Lewis dot symbols and ionic bonding. So and types of elements and ionic bonding, so. In general, for the most part. ionic bonding is between metals and non-metals. That does not cover everything, but it covers most of it. Yes, I will tell you in just a moment, the exception that I mean. So when we're talking about the periodic table. I know that this one is color coded and your exams are printed in black and white. But when you look at the periodic table. In general, we are going to assume that. Something like this, that these guys are non-metals. That hydrogen is also a non-metal. And that the rest of the periodic table are metals. So most of your periodic table is metals, but. Your, most of your P group elements are non-metals, hydrogens and non-metal. So anytime we're talking about metals and non-metals. Non-metals, when they form ions form negative. Anions, metals, on the other hand, form positive, I say negative one, but just negative. So non-metals, negative metals, positive, they form cations. Whenever we talk about ionic compounds. ionic means that you have positive and negative charges and that holds electrostatic attractions. Holds the compound together. So fancy word electrostatic. Attractions. So an exception. Ammonia, there, sorry, the ammonium ion. So I can pair the ammonium ion with. We'll go ahead and put two here and a sulfur. So this is ammonium. Sulfide. But this is the ammonium ion. Getting more crooked as I go. This is the ammonium ion and the sulfide ion. So this is an ionic compound. Even though it's all non-metals. But I don't feel bad about this because this is one of your polyatomic. Ions. It's in the name. Your polyatomic ions, when they form compounds, they have a charge. It's why they're on the polyatomic ions list. So. It should not be a surprise that when I say ionic compounds are formed. By things that have charges coming together. That when you do have the ammonium ion that happens to be all non-metals, but it's got a charge. When it forms compounds, those are also ionic compounds. Okay, so. It is seven o'clock, I did not really do Lewis dot symbols. With ionic bonding and there was a couple of other questions from my class that I didn't do. So I think I still need to do class questions that I didn't get to answer. I think I also need to do. ionic compounds. With Lewis dot structures, which I'm not. This is probably going to wind up being two different things, are there other questions out of the chat?
Yes. So one of them is, is arsenic going to be on the test on Saturday?
So I'm going to, so. Arsenic is on the periodic table, you guys get a periodic table. So is, so if the question is about arsenic. You have a periodic table, we can absolutely ask you about arsenic on the periodic table. So yes, any, any element on the periodic table is fair game because you have a periodic table. Other questions out of the chat?
And then the final question just asks. Where the playback video of this is going to be posted. And I can actually answer that one, it's just going to be posted on the LLC YouTube channel.
The other place where we do post it, which it links to the LLC YouTube channel. Is there is a folder in the seven oh one section. That says exam reviews and in the exam reviews folder, there's now a folder that says exam two reviews. And it's got a link for this session. And it says future location of the recording right now because since. It's happening, I don't have it, but it's going to be, it'll be in the exam to reviews folder, just keep clicking on things. Once living learning community gets that up, it'll be there. Cool. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All of, thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody, about to end the session. This recording will be up on the LLC YouTube channel as well as where. On the website that was just showed, so thank you all so much, bye.